Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the caucus meeting of Monday, August 8th. I would like to call this meeting to order. Before we do the pledge, would the clerk to counsel please go ahead and call the roll? We are a hybrid meeting this evening. As you can see, not every single person is on the council dais. Some are online, so as they call the roll, would you please let them know that you are either in person or online? And you will see that we have new microphones. They should be green right now, which means the microphone is live, so please speak into the microphone. Please call the roll.
Counselor Member Cunningham.
Present in person.
Counselor Member Flueheling.
Present.
Counselor Member Dawson.
Present.
Counselor Member McAllen.
Present.
Counselor Member Lawson.
Mark Lawson, in person.
Counselor Member Howard.
Alice, you're on mute.
You're still on mute, Counselor Member Howard.
No, her microphone isn't working on her computer.
It's not working now? Let me try.
Yes, it's working now.
Okay. How about now?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Member Rodman.
Present in person.
Counselor Member Harvishon.
Present.
Counselor Member Glover.
Vice Chair Somerville.
Present.
Chairman Passamit.
I'm present and in person.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Would a member of council please make a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion, and Mr. Lawson makes the second. Are there any discussion items that we have to have before we approve the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without any objection. Our next item is the review of the county council meeting agenda. As you can see, the agenda is actually relatively short. One of the key items will be the public hearing, public hearings that we have, items number nine and 10. In item number nine, the public hearing on green space. We've had numerous discussions about the green space referendum along the way. I'm sure that your constituents may have talked to you about this. I know that I've been out and about talking with individuals. I've talked to each and every one of the council members. We are going to have this evening an amendment to the agenda item as it stands to reduce the time and the amount. So when we get to that agenda item, there will be an amendment made at that point in time. Is there any other discussion that we need to have on the council agenda meeting? Anybody online have any questions about the meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to any other items that may be coming before council before we go into our executive session. Anything? Seeing none, I would ask a member of council to approve the executive session that we're going to have, which will involve two items pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-470A2, discussions of negotiations, I can say that, incident to proposed contractual agreements and proposed purchase acquisition of real property called Melrose Landing, and pursuant to the same code, discussion of negotiations, incident to proposed contractual arrangements and proposed purchase acquisition of real property known as 1505 North Street. May I have that motion, please?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Who made it first? Mr. Glover made the motion first, and Mr. Rodman made the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that will be done without objection, and we will go into executive session. It is now 5:05. We will be back before 6 o'clock and this meeting and begin the meeting at 6:00 P.M. So we are now in executive session.
Fort Fremont closes out a 350-year legacy of coastal fortifications in Port Royal Sound beginning in the mid-16th century. It also represents the closing chapter of America's coastal defense system before the dawn of air power. Fort Fremont is an example of the most advanced military technology of its time. It would parallel the B-17 and aircraft carrier of World War II, the F-35 of today. Fort Fremont was an important part of the Beaufort culture, very similar to Paris Island and the Marine Corps Air Base today.
In 1525, the Spaniards named this sound and this harbor Santa Helena. They called the navigational point La Punto de Santa Helena, the Point of Santa Helena. And what the Spanish explorers discovered is that Port Royal Sound is a unique piece of geography. It's the deepest natural harbor south of the Chesapeake Bay, possibly south of New York. The channel into Port Royal Sound, this I find a remarkable geological fact. The channel has not changed for 500 years. There's no inlet on the southern coast that hasn't shifted entirely in 500 years, except Port Royal Sound. There's something geologically different, or one might say magical, about Port Royal Sound. So Spanish sailors, being the best in the world in their time, found this place very early, knew that for the Spanish explorations of the American southeast, this would be the entrada, the entrance. And so they built a city across the river, across the sound from where we are on Paris Island that became the first capital of Florida. And they explored the back country from this location for more than a century with the object of building a highway from this magnificent harbor to Mexico City. So the sound was known to the Spaniards. It was known to the French, who actually got here first, and created the first Protestant colony in the New World on Paris Island over my shoulder. And that colony was a failure. The Spaniards replaced them. It was part of Spanish Florida when the English arrived, 150 years later. And this became, as a consequence, a battleground in the 18th century between Spanish interests in Florida and St. Augustine and the English colony in Carolina and in Charleston. And back and forth these wars went, many of them naval wars, many of them employing, as all the sailors knew by then, the magic of Port Royal Sound. When the Civil War came, Confederates defended the harbor, but it was basically indefensible against large naval forces. So the U.S. Navy made it their principal target during the beginning of the Civil War and sent the largest flotilla of ships assembled by the United States Navy in the 19th century into Port Royal Sound on November 7th, 1861. In a four-hour cannonade, which would have been deafening from where we're sitting, was heard for miles from Savannah nearly to Charleston. It was called the Day of the Big Gun Shoot. During the Civil War, this harbor that we're looking at was filled with ships. There would be hundreds of ships in this harbor. There was a thousand-foot dock with a railroad on top off of Hilton Head. The military installation was mammoth. There were 13,000 U.S. soldiers on Hilton Head, which we're looking at, the largest population on Hilton Head until 1974. So this was a major U.S. government installation in the heart of the South. It was the headquarters of the U.S. Army Department of the South, but more importantly, it was the headquarters of the United States Navy's South Atlantic Blockading Squadron. The biggest ships in the Navy were here. And so it became, and that's really where the story of Fort Fremont starts, with that huge Civil War military operations and installations on Hilton Head, on St. Helena Island, on Paris Island, and in Beaufort.
After the Civil War, we're going to see a massive change in technology that's going to revolutionize the military. During the Civil War, we had ironclad ships, we had rifled cannons, but they were all made out of iron, and they were not terribly effective. But its technology is going to change after the Civil War. We're going to see steel produced, and steel is much harder. So now we have a new material to make armor out of for ships, so we can have these armored ships made with steel that are much more resistant to shot. Because I have steel, I can make stronger barrels for my guns. I can rifle and machine these much better, and the rifling is the spirals that are cut in the barrel that allows it to shoot further with more accuracy. And we can also now have breech-loading guns that can lock from behind, so I can load my gun from behind. I don't have to go have the old black powder muzzle-loading cannon that I had before. Now I can fire much more rapidly. If I compare the gun of 1890 to the guns of 1860, for the same caliber, the same diameter gun, the 1890 gun will be able to fire projectile that's four times heavier, can shoot it three times further, can put it in with greater precision, and can put it through much more armor than anything we had in 1860. World difference. A military historian, E. R. Lewis, would say that the change between the Civil War and 1890 in artillery technology was the greatest that would be seen since invention of artillery in the 14th century to the introduction of the nuclear projectile in the 1950s. So there's been a huge change in gun technology. At the same time, it's not just the steel, but also the powder that fires these guns is different. We have new chemical makeup. So like cordite is invented now, and it's still a widely-used military explosive even today. Smokeless powder is invented during this period of time. And it's not just chemical composition, but it's the details of how you make the grain, how fast they burn. So much like the skill of firing a solid rocket, solid fuel rocket, it's that same kind of technology that's been developed in these gunfire and this new powder. So our weapons of this day are much, much greater. They would be the great killing machines of World War I. Most of casualties on the battlefields of World War I would come from artillery. So the world has seen a huge change in artillery, and that's tied into changes in ships. We now have steel armored ships. They're all steam-powered. They are now equipped with these fine long-range guns, and they now become the dominant threat of the late 19th, early 20th century. This is the threat. The French and English would bombard cities like Cairo and reduce them to rubble because they were unable to defend them. So this is how the world was seeing the threat from this new technology. Big battleships are the threat of the era, and new guns and fortifications on the ground are what you have to have to defend against them.
One of the most important and first things that happened after the Civil War is they built a railroad to Port Royal Sound, which didn't exist. It was the first connection of the sea islands to the mainland. The advantage of that railroad is it brought coal to Port Royal Sound. So when the coal was delivered, the Navy followed.
In 1872, Robert Smalls was in the South Carolina Legislature, and he pushed through a resolution to the Secretary of War calling for them to put a Navy station on Paris Island. And eventually, he would go on to Congress where he would continue his support for a Navy station here in the Beaufort-Port Royal area. They eventually opened a Navy station here and a coaling station.
They created in the 1890s on Paris Island the largest dry dock in the United States. This is the period when the U.S. Navy was switching from sail to steam. All the navies of the world needed a coaling station. This was the principal coaling station, because of the railroad, for the Caribbean and South American U.S. fleets.
This would be the biggest dry dock south of Norfolk. In fact, it is the only dry dock south of Norfolk, Virginia, that's capable of taking these new modern battleships and these new modern armored cruisers. So this becomes, at this point, a strategic Navy base in that it provides coal, and it provides top-line support to the ships, and they can repair the hulls of even the biggest ships in the U.S. Navy. Following the Civil War, national strategy and emphasis in the United States shifted to recovery from war, and all of our coastal fortifications went into neglect. The military was busy taming the West, and coastal defenses became something that was no longer important. And the rest of the world, technology is moving forward, and they're developing these battleships, they're developing new high-quality artillery, and this is going on worldwide. And in 1885, President Grover Cleveland appointed Endicott Board. This was headed by Secretary of War Endicott, William Endicott. And the board would meet and issue a report in 1886, and they said the conditions of our coastal defenses were just unbearable. It cannot be allowed to stay like that. And they made recommendations for fortification and improvements. They identified 29 places that needed fortifications, and 11 of which were critical. In that list of 29, Savannah and Charleston are on the list, but Beaufort is not on the list. It'll take international events to bring Beaufort into the play of modern fort technology.
So the USS Maine was here on patrol and in the harbor, and while they were in the harbor several times, they entertained the local population. So the merchants and the social leaders and the political leaders of Beaufort were invited to come have lunch with the captain of the ship, Captain Sigsby. And the officers got to know the people, the people got to know the officers. The crew, which was large, would go ashore on payday and make friends with everybody in town. So it was a very social arrangement between the towns, Port Royal and Beaufort, and the ship. So the Maine left here. It went and re-provision, it refueled in Key West, and then went the 90 miles across to Havana into the harbor and blew up.
This inflamed the already hot passions both in Cuba and here in the United States. At that point, somebody in the War Department realized that we had this big dry dock, the only dry dock in the South that could take on and repair these big capital ships that were in our Navy. We were going to start operations against a power in the Caribbean, and this fort was totally undefended. And that's what put Fort Fremont on the map. We had to have a fort here to defend the coaling station and especially this big dry dock, as well as this fine harbor that's here.
And of course, that event, which killed 300 or more sailors on the ship, was very much followed by the local news media and very much lamented by the many friends that the crew had made here. The destruction of the USS Maine was a personal matter to Beaufort and to Port Royal Sound. And of course, it was the Spanish-American War and the attempt to defend this harbor again which led to the creation of Fort Fremont. The United States declared war on Spain in April 1898.
And by early May, we had temporary batteries in place here, submarine mines were in place, and in the summer, they would actually place the mines across the Beaufort River behind me. The temporary batteries were a temporary expedient. They were located to my left about 1,000 yards. They immediately began construction of what would become Fort Fremont. The large batteries housed the large guns. Battery Fornace, the rapid-fire guns, the smaller battery was completed by June of 1898.
In 1898, everybody in town went to war. They had a naval militia unit, South Carolina Naval Militia Unit, and they were absorbed by the Navy. Many of them ran tugboats from here to New York to Key West, which was the principal support base, Tampa and Key West, for the U.S. Army operations in Cuba.
Peace was declared by the end of 1898, and the remainder of Fort Fremont would not be finished until early 1899, and the first soldiers would arrive from the regular army at that point in March 1899.
Well, Fort Fremont was named for Major General John Fremont. He was actually a local boy, so to speak. He was born and grew up in Savannah, Georgia, just south of us, and went to college in the College of Charleston, just north of us in Charleston. He served in the Army and primarily initially as an explorer, as Army forts were generally named for Army officers, and he was connected locally. This is more than likely why the fort was named for him.
The fort was constructed on a site directly across the river from the Paris Island Naval Station, and the site selected was 170 acres, which included the two artillery batteries. Fort Fremont, of course, had Battery Fornace and Battery Jessup. But then adjacent to the battery site was an administrative quadrangle, a very typical military-type administrative square.
We are sitting in the number-three gun position of a three-gun battery, Battery Jessup, which had three 10-inch disappearing carriage, large-caliber guns, breech-loading guns. Their purpose was to engage the warships that might be entering the harbor and Port Royal Sound. We're here now at the second battery that was part of Fort Fremont. This is Battery Fornace, was named for an Army officer that was actually killed during the Spanish-American War, during the Battle of San Juan Hill. Battery Fornace mounted two British-made 4.72-inch Armstrong quickfire guns. They were called quickfire because they loaded, were loaded with a complete cartridge, and in time of action, they could fire four to six rounds per minute. The purpose of Battery Fornace was to defend the minefield, which was the other component of the Endicott Coast artillery or coast defense system. A minefield with controlled mines, controlled meaning that they were connected electrically to shore and could be fired on command from shore. That control station would have been probably shared with the plotting room. And in order to protect the minefield, obviously, an enemy would want to interfere with that, might send vessels, small ships, in here at night to try to interfere, and this battery would take those vessels under fire if there was some, there was suspected that they were doing something to interfere with the mines, such as pulling up the cables and cutting those.
The Endicott-era fort was a formidable technology. It represented state-of-the-art technology, defense technology of its time against the state-of-the-art threat, which would be the battleship.
The life for the soldiers at Fort Fremont was disciplined and regimented. They even had meal times were specified lengths of time, 15 minutes for lunch, 15 minutes at breakfast, 20 minutes at supper. They had to practice their skills. They were training and doing maintenance constantly. If you can imagine, with these big guns, they had to have skills in, and practice the skills in artillery, mine-laying, signaling, which involved, in our case at Fort Fremont, the use of the fire-control tower, which was a pretty sophisticated and advanced signaling technique. Then they also had to practice the typical military skills, marching and drilling, small arms fire, first aid, and so forth. In addition to that, they also had, participated in athletics. They had physical training, PT, and they also had sports teams. So this was to keep them physically fit so that they could continue their duties because they were, it was pretty rigorous at Fort Fremont.
When eventually a decision was made to move the dry dock and the coaling station and the Navy station up to Charleston, then this fort no longer became significant. There was nothing left here that was to be protected. And at that point, 1911, the last troops were transferred out, and the fort was closed.
In 1901, the mayor of Charleston and the United States Senator Pitchfork Ben Tillman from South Carolina wanted this to move from Beaufort County to Charleston County because there are more votes in Charleston County. And the mayor wanted the U.S. Corps of Engineers and the Navy to dredge the harbor in Charleston because battleships in those days required 26 feet of water. Charleston's natural harbor is 15 feet of water. Port Royal is 30 feet of water. In order for Charleston to sustain its port, its commercial port, it had to dredge the harbor. Well, if they could get the Navy up there, they'd get the Corps of Engineers to dredge the harbor. That was the play. And the play for Pitchfork Ben Tillman, the U.S. Senator in 1900, was that he'd get a whole lot more votes from, votes from the largest city in South Carolina. So it was a political-commercial operation, and they moved the, and it was done boom like that.
The fort did its job, a deterrent for anybody that wished to attack these. It provided protection. In fact, the whole Endicott system, although never challenged in this era here in the United States, provided some 300 major guns, coastal guns, to protect major areas, and left the United States at the beginning of the 20th century with as well-defended coastline as anyplace in the world.
I would just like to say that it's a magnificent artifact of an era, and it's an era that has been neglected, the turn of the 20th century, the naval station across the river here. And so it's a, it's a piece of history that's disappearing, and the friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have preserved it for the use of the public and as a memorial to that moment in history.
Fort Fremont closes a 350-year story of homeland security addressing European imperialism in the 19th century. It's a tale of how geography, technology, and national security creates a transition for America to become a global
for America to become a global power. It's also a wonderful snapshot of America in the beginning of the 20th century. The Friends of Fort Fremont and Beaufort County have a valued partnership, working in tandem to preserve the fort's integrity and promote the historical, natural, and cultural aspects of the fort. Most important, we are always looking for creative ways to enhance visitor experience.
It's civilization versus nature's fury. Raging blizzards bury cities under thousands of tons of snow. Howly hurricanes tear apart coastal communities with wind and rain, and flash floods wipe entire towns off the face of the earth. As the skies clear, people begin to pick up the pieces. But after the storm, insidious damage is still being done. Our most vital natural resource is under assault, our nation's waters.
We're at the Chattahoochee Nature Center, and we're trying to find out what a watershed is. First victim. I need you to tell me what a watershed is. Do you have any idea?
Watershed?
A watershed? Where people go to the bathroom?
Sweating, I guess.
Something to do with sweating?
Uh huh.
Like after you run, when you?
You perspire, yeah.
And then you shed it?
Uh huh.
We wanted to ask you if you knew what a watershed was.
A watershed?
Yeah.
Is it kind of like the rain?
Do you know what a watershed is?
A shed that holds water.
Come here for a second, I want to ask you something. Do you know what a watershed is?
No.
No?
Do you have any idea? What do you think it has something to do with?
Uh, I don't know.
What a watershed is? Yeah. That's just a drain pool, I guess you'd say, or the drain area that where the water, the rainwater drains into the river.
Correct. That's a great answer.
A watershed is that area of land that drains to a body of water, be that if it's a river, a stream, the ocean, an estuary, a bay. Wherever you live, drains to some water body, and you live in a watershed, so everyone lives in a watershed.
And in this modern industrial age, our water sources are becoming more contaminated with each passing year.
The biggest water quality problem that we have in the nation today is polluted runoff.
All water east of the Continental Divide drains to the Atlantic, while water west of the divide flows to the Pacific. And one drop of rain can cross many different watersheds along the way. As runoff flows into rivers, streams, and storm drains, the water picks up trash, dirt, bacteria, toxic chemicals, and fertilizers, creating a soup of pollutants that is extremely hazardous to the environment. And the consequences of polluted runoff exist worldwide.
The UN estimate is that there's about a billion people on the planet right now who don't have adequate access to fresh water.
Ninety-seven percent of all water on Earth is salty ocean water. Of the remaining three percent is fresh. Over two-thirds is frozen in glaciers and polar ice. That leaves less than one percent of all the planet's water for our use.
I predict in the future that some of the US water needs are going to come through pipeline because we have just overused our supply.
To address the complex threats facing US water resources, the Environmental Protection Agency recommends adopting a watershed approach.
We're trying to reconnect some of the river.
It's a method that looks at each watershed for its own unique set of environmental challenges and solutions.
In many cases, people mistakenly identify large discharge pipes in the water as the problem, but that may not be the problem. It may be coming from agricultural runoff. It may be coming from stormwater runoff over parking lots and impervious surfaces. Every watershed is different, and you need to look at each watershed in its own terms and then think systematically about how you remediate, how you clean up that watershed.
In California, the Santa Monica Bay watershed drains a dangerous amount of polluted runoff after each storm.
When it rains, literally, the whole residue of urban living ends up getting washed into the storm drain system and ends up going straight into the bay on Santa Monica Bay's beaches with no treatment whatsoever.
It's actually like a giant toilet flushing because all the pollution, the dog mess has been building up and building up and building up. When it rains, it just flushes into the storm drain and goes directly into the surf.
In 1996, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission proved there was a link between the contaminated runoff in the Santa Monica Bay and reports of illness afflicting people who swim there.
What we did find was at the outlets of storm drains, no matter where they were up and down the bay, if there was a flow of runoff into the surf zone, those people that were swimming in those areas definitely experienced higher incidences of illnesses.
The pollutants in the water affect surfers because we're actually the indicator species with all the pollutants. When we are in the waters, we're ingesting it through our skin and our mouth. Even if people don't take a swallow of water, it's still getting into our systems, our ears, any orifice in your body. And it causes infections, it can cause colds, sore throats, at the very least.
I wouldn't want to swim in, you know, water that's got those diseases in there, you know, just floating around, making more diseases.
I've seen it pretty much as bad as it can be. I've seen crap floating out in the water, literally.
Generically, we call it fecal coliform. More specifically, you might know of it as E. coli, Salmonella, or Enterococcus, whatever's in poop.
There's times when it tastes funky, for sure.
Every day, the city and county of Los Angeles perform a battery of tests to keep the public informed about water quality in the Santa Monica Bay. Cesar Arzadon begins the monitoring process each morning by taking a series of coastline water samples. Then it's back to the lab for analysis.
Most of the bacteria that you're going to see, it comes from feces. And when you put it under the UV light, you're going to see a different kind of color. It's a fluorescent sign that there is a bacteria, and then it's called E. coli. That one definitely is feces from animals, or it could be humans also.
The results are reported to the Health Department, and beach warnings are posted as necessary.
The number of beach postings has decreased, and eighty-five percent of the beaches that have been monitored in California have received either A or B grades. And that's significantly different than four years ago.
But while progress is being made in California, the harmful effects of polluted runoff are a growing concern everywhere. So what can the average person do to help reduce pollution in our watersheds?
How you apply pesticides or not in your garden, how you wash your cars, making sure that you don't throw cigarette butts out onto the street.
Do not dump things on the ground, especially oils or any chemical pollutants. Pick up after your dogs. A lot of people don't realize how important that is. And just be a conscientious citizen, and don't leave anything on the ground.
I think one person can make a difference, and it needs to make the difference. If not you, who?
Coming up.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
Can the Gulf of Mexico be saved from polluted runoff? It was a flood of apocalyptic scale. Twenty-six thousand square miles of the Lower Mississippi Valley inundated by water, more than two hundred lives lost, and six hundred thousand people displaced from their homes. The flood of 1927 was the most disastrous in US history, and its effects are still felt today. After the flood of '27, massive levees were put in place. And while they helped protect the Lower Mississippi River basin from flooding, the levees and other human activities would ultimately harm the watershed in unforeseen ways. The Gulf state of Louisiana is the terminus of the Mississippi River, the mighty watershed that drains forty-one percent of the area of the lower forty-eight states into the Gulf of Mexico.
We receive water from as far away as Montana, Michigan, to Pennsylvania, Ohio, Iowa. All those waters drain right past this area right here.
But by the time all that water enters the Gulf, it has accumulated enough contaminants from polluted runoff to create an enormous hypoxic zone, an area of water lacking in vital oxygen.
The size of the low-oxygen zone in the Gulf of Mexico is about nine thousand square miles. That's equal to the size of the state of New Jersey.
The shortage of oxygen is killing fish and other sea life and could potentially have a devastating effect on the regional economy.
We are the largest navigation port in the United States. We are the second-largest in the world. We have the largest fisheries in this country.
When we was crabbing, a lot of times, all our crab, we dead, we can't even sell them.
The reason hypoxia should be of concern to most citizens in this nation is because it's a sign. It's a sign of the degradation of our water resources.
We're heading for what's known as an ecosystem collapse.
If you're going to have an ecological disaster caused by the offshore hypoxic areas, then that absolutely translates into an economic disaster.
So what exactly is causing this dead zone in the Gulf? Hypoxia develops when an area of water receives excess pollutants, primarily an overabundance of nutrients, which produce large algae blooms that die off and lead to low oxygen. And since the Mississippi gets fed by tributaries that flow through thirty-one states, that adds up to a staggering volume of contaminated runoff.
You have drainage into the Gulf of Mexico from the Ohio River, the Mississippi River, and the Missouri River. Yet each of those three major river systems are watersheds in and of themselves with their own challenges and their own problems.
The Mississippi River has always delivered a lot of water, and that hasn't changed over the centuries. What's changed is the amount of nutrients in that water.
In fact, the Mississippi's nitrogen levels in the Lower Mississippi River have tripled since the 1950s, and the growing hypoxic zone off the Louisiana coast contains the disturbing evidence.
It's like a rusty color, stanky, rotten-looking. You see fish just swimming sideways, gasping for air and stuff like that. And when you pull up the nets, not one shrimp alive, all dead, orange. The fish, they rotten, like melting away and stuff like that, can't breathe, stuff. And it's just rotten.
This is just a fact of life, the way we treat our water systems because we use them as our garbage dumps. We use them to dilute our pollutants and things like that, and it flows downstream. I believe the statistic is that if you're in New Orleans, the water that is going by you has passed through human guts something like three or four times before it gets to you.
Incredibly, Louisiana boasts a natural resource that removes pollutants from the draining Mississippi, the once-abundant wetlands.
Plants that grow in wetlands produce these wonderful filters for everything that is coming into them. They trap sediment, they tem the chemicals, and what leaves the wetlands is much, much cleaner water.
Wetlands also provide an important habitat for birds and other wildlife. Sadly, the Louisiana wetlands are quickly disappearing.
Coastal Louisiana has lost about 1.2 million acres of wetlands in the last one hundred years.
When we levied off the Mississippi, it cut off the Mississippi River water from the marshes.
In addition to the levees, a network of man-made navigation channels is also compromising the wetlands by allowing salt water to seep into the marshes.
Once that salt water travels up these channels and overflows the banks of these channels out into freshwater systems such as the Cypress Swamp, that salt water sits out there around the roots of these trees and kills them. They cannot survive salt water, they're freshwater plants.
Eliminating the hypoxic zone will take more than saving our wetlands. Reducing nutrient runoff in the Mississippi River watershed is the heart of the problem. It's an issue involving over half the states in the nation and a vast array of industries, particularly farming, which uses nitrogen-rich fertilizer to grow its crops.
Fertilizers are helping the United States produce the food for the world, but there is such a thing as overuse.
There are scientists who have done the analyses and predict that you could reduce fertilizers by about twelve percent without reducing crop production and see a significant decrease in the amount of nitrogen going into the Mississippi River.
Experts say the first key to changing behavior is raising public awareness.
We all live downstream of somebody, and we all live upstream of somebody. So what somebody else does in their watershed affects the water that I receive, and what I do in my watershed affects the water that somebody else receives downstream.
If we don't clean up our act, our water resources, which we simply cannot live without, will be ruined. Coming up, can the water supply for nine million New Yorkers be saved from the ravages of polluted runoff? In January of 1996, one of the most devastating winter storms in history slams the east coast. Two feet of snow dumps on New York and throughout the northeast corridor. Schools, airports, and roads are shut down. By the time it's over, the blizzard and resultant flooding caused three billion dollars in losses, and a hundred and eighty-seven lives are taken. And in the Catskill Mountains of upstate New York, the snowmelt triggers another potentially devastating crisis. Stormwater runoff contaminated with trash, dirt, fertilizers, and pesticides from nearby farms and communities threatens the freshwater supply. And the Catskill system of reservoirs is vitally important, for it is the biggest watershed of New York City, providing drinking water to over nine million people.
The miracle of the city's water supply system is largely unknown to most New Yorkers. You ask people, where does the water come from? Often, people shrug their shoulders and say, New Jersey.
I figured that we were probably our own separate water system then from upstate. I'd rather be drinking water from upstate than the Hudson River.
I don't know that most people are aware of how large the problem is and how close to crisis many of our water supply systems are.
To preserve the purity of the reservoirs and enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Environmental Protection Agency presented the Big Apple with two options. Either build and maintain a six-billion-dollar facility to filter all of the city's tap water, or fund a one-billion-dollar program to protect the watershed from polluted runoff.
When it comes to our investment in clean air and clean water, preserving open space, fixing antiquated sewage treatment plants, we can't wait. It doesn't get any less expensive, it gets more expensive.
With the historic watershed agreement of 1997, an unprecedented upstate-downstate partnership was forged to protect the New York City water supply.
The watershed agreement is saving New York City billions of dollars.
The plan includes purchasing and preserving three hundred and fifty-five thousand acres of undeveloped watershed land, the upgrading of sewage treatment plants, and the protection and restoration of stream corridors.
What we're looking at here is Main Tributary, the Asopus Creek. During flooding, we were seeing a lot of sediment coming out of the stream. The clay gets into the water column, and it becomes very turbid, and then it makes it very difficult to treat and clean that water. So from a water quality perspective, we're very concerned about erosion.
The program also provides funding for farmers that implement agriculture management practices.
Well, we have a very exciting program with the Watershed Agricultural Council where we are working with local farmers. We look at how they're handling the animals so that the runoff associated with manure, fertilizer, and that farm activity isn't getting into the streams around our reservoirs.
This water here is basically the water you're going to be drinking down in the city. And I feel I've got a responsibility to try my best to keep it clean for when it gets down there. It used to be when it rained here on the farm, the water that ran away from the back of the barn here was full of mud, manure, and it would just run brown and right into the stream. Two years ago, we would spread every day. We'd have to take it out, spread it on the fields. If the snow was deep, we spread it on the snow, and unfortunately, if the ground was froze when the snow melted, the nutrient value of it for fertilizer was gone, it wound up down in the reservoir.
With New York City funding, a secure, above-ground steel tank that can hold four hundred thousand gallons of manure was installed on the Meadowbrook Farm.
That's enough storage for six months of the year. Now we can store it, spread it, when it'll do the most good to us for fertilizer, and we don't have to spread it every day.
I worked with Tim on the plan to develop the improvements we're going to make. Plan really belongs to the farmer, and it's a collaboration of their ideas and what technical advice we can bring to the program, but the farmer makes the decision.
It's a program that seems to make everybody happy.
Here's to the farmers who are working so hard to make sure we've got clean water to put in our coffee.
To guarantee the city's water supply is fresh at the tap, comprehensive tests are performed by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, both in the lab and at over one thousand sampling stations throughout the city.
New York City has probably one of the most extensive water quality monitoring programs in the nation. in the nation, if not the world.
We're sampling every day, 365 days a year. I've been drinking this water for 53 years, nothing else. Best water in the world, New York City, straight from the tap to my lips.
Coming up, the future of our water supply remains at risk, but there's something everyone can do to help protect it. Find out how, next. To keep our watersheds free of pollutants will require the actions of every citizen, community, and business.
Paved, concrete surfaces, asphalt, parking lots, sidewalks. The question is, do we need to have as many as we do? Because to the extent that you have too much impervious surface, the water is not retained on site. It doesn't soak into the ground, it runs off, picks up speed, carries pollutants and contaminants into the water body.
One strategy for preventing stormwater runoff is occurring at the new Ford Rouge Center in Dearborn, Michigan. This remodeled truck plant is covered by a green roof the size of eight football fields. Planted with a porous ground cover, it reduces the amount of polluted runoff released into the watershed.
The thing that tends to get the most attention is the 10-acre green roof, but that's really just part of a philosophy that if an area does not have to be paved or built upon, it's going to be green space.
And communities are also implementing green space strategies, such as rain gardens.
They sloped the lot in such a manner that all the flow goes towards this landscaping, where basically the polluted runoff can percolate into the ground and get filtered, rather than going straight onto the street into the storm drain system, and really a very simple approach to cleaning up our runoff in urban areas.
But perhaps the most powerful course of action is individual participation.
People need to take responsibility for the state of our waters, and water conservation is one area where they can do that as a committed citizen. All those things your mom told you, take a short shower, don't let the water tap run while you're brushing your teeth.
Taking your household hazardous waste to a cleanup and recycling day. Don't wash your car on the streets and put all those suds down into the drain.
When you change your used motor oil, you don't dump it into the street. Everybody's got to clean up after their pets. Obviously, that's a big concern. Fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, make sure you don't use them anytime there's any chance of rain coming up in the near future. When you're irrigating your lawn and your garden, make sure that you're not overspraying and causing all those chemicals to end up getting into the storm drain system. The only way we're going to solve the problem is if everybody does their part.
We all live in a watershed. We all have an impact on our environment, and we must all play a role in the protection and restoration of our valuable water resources. To learn more about how you can get involved and to get a free brochure called "After the Storm," visit epa.gov/weatherchannel.
Dr. Gates, tell me a little bit about the timeliness of the Reconstruction Series. Why now?
12 years of black freedom, followed by an alt-right rollback, a president immediately following Abraham Lincoln, who refused to renounce white supremacy, a conservative Supreme Court that effectively undid the power of the 14th and 15th Amendments. What's that sound like?
Contemporary times.
Contemporary times. So it was obvious that we could teach our fellow citizens in America about the perilous moment in which we're living by analogy through telling the story of Reconstruction and its rollback. And I first started thinking about it after the horrible murders of Reverend Clementa Pinckney and the other innocents at Mother Emanuel Church. Because the justifications that Dillon Roof summoned for his actions were very reminiscent of racist rhetoric about black people immediately following the Civil War and following Reconstruction. And I was shocked. It's almost like a horror movie when you think that vampires dead, and all of a sudden they come up out of the casket, and you think, damn, I thought I put a stake in your heart. I thought that the worst and most pernicious, heinous aspects of anti-black white supremacy were long gone, and that I was naive about that. And we've seen a rise in hate speech, antisemitism, anti-gay attitudes, and people, when people become frightened, particularly about their economic future, they look for scapegoats. And the scapegoats traditionally...
One, welcome to our county council meeting of Monday, August the 8th. We are a hybrid group this evening, as we have been in the past. That means several of us are in county council chambers, as you can see, others are online. I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Please let us know that you are in fact present.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present in person.
Councilmember Flewelling.
I'm present.
Councilmember Dawson. Councilmember McEllen.
President of the line.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson, in person.
Councilmember Howard.
Present.
Councilmember Rodman.
Present in chambers.
Councilmember Hervishon.
Present in person.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Vice Chair Somerville.
Present on line.
Chairman Passamit.
Present and in house.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain...
Mr. Lawson's here? No, he's not. Oh, you got four of us.
And then remain standing for the invocation by Mr. Lawson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask you for your blessing, bless us quick to listen, slow to speak, slow to anger, but let us use the wisdom you've given us to make decisions that are best for many and not the few. Let us protect those who cannot protect themselves. Let us put aside our personalities to be productive for those we represent. Please bless our employees, our staff, our elected officials. Please bless and protect our law enforcement and first responders and keep them safe. We thank you that we can live in such a beautiful place. Amen.
Amen. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to approve tonight's agenda. Mr. Rodman makes the motion to approve the agenda. May I have a second, please?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the agenda is approved without exception. Next is the approval of the minutes of May 9, 23, June 13, June 27, and July 11 of 2022. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. A second, please, please. Mr. Rodman makes the second. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without exception. We now turn to our administrator, Mr. Greenway, for his report. Mr. Greenway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several things to go over tonight, mostly presentations of accomplishments of our county workforce and those people that we have working relationships with. So our first item this evening is to announce that your employee, Ms. Sarah Brock, who serves as your clerk and counsel, just completed and graduated from the NACO Leadership Academy. NACO, for those in the audience, stands for the National Association of Counties. Ms. Brock has spent a lot of time in this Leadership Academy. She spent a lot of time sharing with me things that she's learned in the Leadership Academy, so I'm not sure what that says about me, but anyway, I want to thank her for her diligence in that. One of the things that you as county council and the citizens of this county can be proud of is the level of interest and energy that our county employees and workforce has in learning new things and advancing their careers to make sure that they're the most qualified and most prepared to do the jobs that they've been hired to do. So congratulations, Sarah. Let's give her a round of applause. Also this evening, something coming out of the clerk and council's office that is somewhat sad news for us is that we often, when you hire great talent, many times that great talent gets another opportunity just after they've taken a job. Our Morgan Jeffries, Ms. Morgan Jeffries, has been selected by the Department of Commerce to go to work in Washington, DC, to be an international trade specialist with the Department of Commerce. So we're going to be losing her, but we are proud of her, we are proud to have worked with her. She's a talented young lady, and we look forward to great things from her out of Washington, DC. She has a bright future ahead of her and will be an asset to any organization she works for. So let's give Morgan a round of applause. And then we have a couple of, about three things, awards. I'm going to ask Katie Herrera and Neil Deci to come up to the podium here with me. So this metal logic that Ms. Herrera is holding here is not a piece of scrap metal or something that we found at the recycling center. It is one of the two awards that we won at this year's South Carolina Association of Counties Conference in Wild Dunes up in the Isle of Palms. This was the Barrett Larry Moore Memorial Regional Cooperation Award, and this award highlights the critical need for regional partnerships. highlights the critical need for regional partnerships, strategies, and solutions of the five counties, including a partnership of three that submitted entries. Beaufort County won the award for its Southern Low Country Stormwater Design Manual, which was started, many, was an initiative started quite some time ago, just as I was coming on board here in 2018. But Neil and Katie were able to finish that off and resulted in us winning this award at this year's Association of County Conference. So let's give them a round of applause.
Yes.
Do I want to say anything? You want to say anything?
Sure. I'll just say thank you to, you know, the county leadership here for supporting the initiative with the Southern Low Country Stormwater Design Manual. We've been in implementation for over a year now, and we're currently implementing with the town of Bluffton. So this award not only is for, you know, the county, but also the municipalities that helped us get there as well, which includes Jasper County, Bluffton, City of Beaufort, Town of Poor Oil, and City of Hardyville. So this is a group effort. It was well deserved, and we're glad to bring it home to us. So thanks.
This is one of those awards that your county administrator has to eat a little bit of crow home because I was, if you recall, I was originally against what I'm getting ready to announce that we received award on. So I'm not sure I'm the best person to present this this evening because I was against it. But the Jay Mitchell Graham Memorial Award, we also won this year, so we took both prizes this year. This award recognizes counties that address community challenges, implement operational improvements, or enhance their citizens' quality of life in a unique way. Of the seven counties that submitted entries, Beaufort County won first place for implementing a collection center decal system to regulate the entrance and use of the county's collection centers. This decal system, which was implemented in the fall of 2021, has saved the county thousands of dollars, resulting in reduced operational costs, traffic, and environmental concerns. So again, I originally was not in support of this, but it turned out that I was wrong. These folks have done a great job implementing that program. It has resulted in what they told me it would do, and that was operational and solid waste cost savings to the citizens of the county. So Cindy, I'm going to let you say a few words. Do you need help holding that? These things are heavy, by the way. So that thing Katie was carrying around, you could get carpal tunnel hauling that thing around. So anyway, Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to also thank council for your support when we got the Goldsmith Report. You were in favor of us taking this to task, and I'd like to thank Angel personally. She worked a lot of hours. Everybody in our department did. I'd also like to thank our GIS and mapping section. Robert Geese was wonderful. Dan Morgan was very supportive, and even Shannon Loper and the Parks and Rec. Part of this was during the COVID period, and she used some of her administration people to help us with the cards. So it was a group effort.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
I wanted you up here as well. That's great. So one of the pleasures of my job is getting to work with the county channel, and we have a lot of talent in our county channel. We also have the best host of our county channel for our Coastal Kingdom television show. The county channel's award-winning nature series Coastal Kingdom has won another 2022 Southeastern Emmy Award in the category Best On Camera Host. This is the fifth-time Coastal Kingdom's host and naturalist Tony Mills has been nominated for Best TV Host, and this is his third Emmy win. The series also won the award in 2018 and 2020. To date, the Coastal Kingdom team has received seven Southeastern Emmy nominations. Coastal Kingdom is a production partnership between the county channel and the Low Country Institute on Spring Island. It was created and produced by county broadcast services producer Rob Lewis and Tony Mills. Coastal Kingdom has been produced for over a decade and has been used in classrooms all over South Carolina. It has been invaluable and featuring the beautiful habitats and unique creatures of the South Carolina Low Country. This is the fifth-time Coastal Kingdom's host and naturalist Tony Mills has been nominated for Best TV Host, and if it's, well, and it is his third Emmy, as I said before. So Tony, Rob, do you guys have anything you want to say?
Well, first of all, I'm very pleased with the partnership that we have between Spring Island Trust and Beaufort County Channel and the county in general. Also, I am lucky because I get to work with Rob Lewis. Rob is a very talented filmmaker and a great guy, and he makes us all look good, for sure. The other thing is I just wanted to shout out to Rachel Wallman, who's another member of our team, and she's an important part of it, for sure. And the last thing is, we love making Coastal Kingdom because we want people to realize that where they live is special. We want people to understand and appreciate it so they can do the best possible job taking care of them.
And I just want to say thank you to this administration, Mr. Greenway, my boss, Scott Grooms, and the whole department of the county channel. This has been the highlight of my career to work on this show with Tony. We've been doing it for over a decade now and have a lot of fun times. And I want to say, too, this is a big market that we won this award in. It features the Atlanta media market, as well as all of Georgia, Charleston, Greenville, all of Mississippi, and all of Alabama. That's the whole southeastern market. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
And then finally, I just want to give kudos to the staff here at the county. A couple of weeks ago, I had an epiphany that there might be a need for us to reach out, to offer some assistance to the Beaufort County School District in the collection of school supplies and materials for underprivileged folks. So we began the Beaufort County Employee Bright Future School Supply Drive on July 27. It will end on Wednesday, August 10, Tuesday, August 10. And with only a couple of days left, we have abundant amount of school supplies that have been collected. We will then give these to the Beaufort County School System for them to distribute to those students who may need additional assistance. And I'm very proud of the county employees for stepping up to the plate and participating in this the way they did, and to any members of the general public that also contributed. Thank you all very much. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to citizens' comments. I have two sets of citizen comments. One will be taken up when we actually do the public hearings because that's the most appropriate time for you to weigh in on the public hearings. And then we have citizen comments in general. And so I would like to begin with our Senator Tom Davis. Senator Davis, welcome again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some brief comments. About two hours ago, I received an opinion from the Attorney General's office. As you'll recall, at the meeting, I guess a couple, more than a couple of weeks ago, but at the last meeting, there were some questions raised in regard to the Greenspace Act. One was in regard to what was the role of the advisory committee and vis a vis the county council. Second was in regard to the listing of leases as one of the options that the county had in making preservation procurements. And then third, there was a question regarding, did the municipalities or other government entities have a right to any of the sales tax proceeds pursuant to the terms of the Act? And I did submit those questions to the Attorney General. I think I copied you all with that. And to their credit, they moved this particular question up in the queue because they knew that county council was going to be relying upon it in making a decision this evening. And just in summary, and I'll be very quick in answering any questions you might have, Mr. Chairman. The Attorney General confirmed the same thing that the General Counsel for the Department of Revenue and the Clerk of the Senate had previously said in an opinion. In other words, the seven-member advisory committee's role pursuant to the Act was not plenary or policymaking or in regard to the actual identification of procurements to be made. It was simply as an oversight mechanism, make sure that county council was in fact expending the money for preservation purposes and that it wasn't a slush fund for some other purpose. The reason for that layer of accountability was because unlike with local option sales taxes for, say, road projects, there won't be a listing in advance in the ballot of how the money's going to be spent. That's typically what happens with a local option sales tax for roads. You list the projects. This is prospective in nature. It's raising money, and then the county will set in place processes whereby land will be identified and negotiations entered into, so you don't know in advance what they're going to be. Therefore, that's the reason for this advisory committee's role, but it is limited to that administrative oversight role. The Attorney General also confirmed that notwithstanding the listing of leases as one of the procurement techniques in the Act, if this county council did not want to enter into leases, didn't think that was an appropriate way to preserve land, it was not obligated to use those. Those are simply a listing of all the tools in the toolbox for the county council to use in connection with preservation efforts. And then lastly, the opinion confirms that if this is approved by the county council tonight, and if it is approved by the voters at a referendum event in November, the sales tax proceeds that would result from that accrue to the benefit of the county council alone for purposes of procurements, not to any municipalities. Okay, so there were some questions in that regard. So I think that I've answered all the questions that council may have had. I'm happy to answer any further questions you all might have, though.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from any council member for Senator Davis? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Okay, we'll next go to Deborah Smith, who is online. Deborah, can you take yourself off mute? There you are.
I am. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll just wait, and it could be other folks will be saying what I say, and then I won't have to take up your time.
Okay, so you'll come back if needed at the public hearing?
If that's okay.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Scott Smith.
Appreciate you allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Scott Smith. My wife and I own a cottage at 131 Avenue of Oaks on DeFuski Island. At this time where I live, looks like I stepped from a horror movie because of years of neglect. To their credit, White Rock has done an initial job of cleanup, which has been an improvement. I invite you to come over and see this depressed and abandoned area that exists on our island and in your county. Definitely not an area to be proud of. Rentals of my property have decreased substantially from a year ago. Public's high expectations of the Melrose development are being dashed by last-minute discussions by county regarding the dock and other aspects of the proposed Melrose purchase. All of our differences need to be cleared away and progress made quickly toward the renovation and redevelopment of the Melrose property. Mr. Bill Wurkheiser, president of the Melrose College Reunions Association, at the last meeting of this council, pointed out the positive aspects of Whitestone's project and the positive impact of the project would have not only on our neighborhood, but the entire island. The Melrose Dock is the linchpin to both the Fuski Island's economy and the Whitestone-Melrose deal. There are few productive assets associated with this acquisition. Removing this dock entirely from the hands of Whitestone has the potential to destroy their agreements and cash flow projections that have been crafted between the development, the county, and others. It is my, condemnation proceedings are expensive and time-consuming. They are fraught with legal wrangling and accounting arguments on the value of property, and typically, these matters take years, if ever, to settle. My understanding of discussions between Whitestone and the county explained at the DeFuski Island Council meeting last week appears to provide access to both parties and control to clearly define portions of the dock, access road, and adjacent properties. I applaud and support their efforts. These discussions appear likely to be the most efficient and expedient approach to the future operation of the dock as suggested in the DeFuski Island Council's letter of August 5. All obstacles to competing, completing this agreement and any related agreements should be removed quickly so that the improvements can continue to be made and the faith of the current residents and our elected officials can be restored. Thank you.
Leanne.
My name's Leanne Coulter, and I currently serve on the DeFuski Island Council as vice chair. On July 27, Mr. Greenway and Mr. Pitcher held a public meeting on DeFuski Island announcing that they were working together on an agreement for the Melrose Dock and the surrounding property. At the meeting, there were residents from all of the neighborhoods on DeFuski Island, Historic District, Melrose, Bloody Point, and Heck Point. There was a great sense of relief from everybody in the room. An agreement holds promise that a situation might work for everybody on the island, which is the goal. A statement by the DeFuski Island Council was not meant to be adversarial in any manner. However, the DeFuski Island Council has asked Beaufort County to secure an embarkation center on DeFuski Island and on the Hilton Head-Bluffton area for some years now. A motion brought forward by Mr. Lawson on June 27 to purchase the Melrose Dock and property on Helmsman's Way is supported by the DeFuski Island Council. A public landing on both sides of the water is essential for DeFuski Island residents, for all of us. It provides a vital transportation link to and from the island. Currently, the cost of a round-trip ticket to DeFuski is $60. Overnight parking is $12 per day. Ferry transportation alone for a family of five coming to the island is $600, or excuse me, is $300. Recently, a resident told me her daughter, husband, and their three children were vacationing on Hilton Head, and they wanted to come for a visit, but they couldn't do, simply couldn't afford a $300 ticket to come. The DeFuski Island Council has full confidence in the Beaufort County Council to work for the good of every resident on DeFuski Island, regardless of the community that they met then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John.
I'm also on the DeFuski Island Council, and I would like to first applaud you and Whitestone for working out agreements. The DeFuski people are very concerned about the development of Melrose. Whitestone has come in as a good partner. We see that, and we appreciate that effort. There's going to be a lot of negotiating to do, and we're behind you 100%. As a private business, they are entitled to conduct their business as they see fit, and pricing is business structures. And ferry tickets, working in the ferry department, I know ferry business is very expensive. Boats are expensive. Dock maintenance is expensive. Those costs have to be passed down to customers. We appreciate everybody's effort, and we look forward to working with you and Whitestone to have the development work out. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Fox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm Robert Fox. I represent the proposed developer at Melrose. I like the way the, my predecessors have spoken. It's interesting, they all, you heard them refer to a meeting that took place on DeFuski at which the county administrator was present and Mr. Pitcher was present, and they referred to an agreement that they had started to work on. On that day that they went to DeFuski, they met in my office with Jim Shider and myself. We met for about two hours with Ms. Ward, the Assistant County Attorney, and we started working on that, this process. We made a lot of progress. We have not resolved all of the issues. We have suggested to you, and we suggest respectfully to this council, that the matter be continued. be continued, your second reading be postponed, and that as a possible way to address this is that it be referred to a committee of council to study the issues that we think still remain. Those issues are, is the council, is this council prepared to go into the Marina Ports Authority business? Do we want to create a Beaufort County Ports Authority to run this port that's going to be brought back? Does the county really want to proceed on the $800,000 valuation basis that you have? The valuation is based on an opinion made without a site visit by the person expressing the opinion, without taking into consideration that the property was under contract at the time of valuation was made, and without taking into consideration the fact that the property generates a substantial amount of money or revenue annually. And third, the county's valuation does not take into consideration the fact that the county is proposing to condemn not a dock and two parcels of real estate, but in fact a project. And that project is made up of two parts. First is the revenue generating part, and it's relatively easy and you've got enough CPAs and finance people on this council to figure out what the capitalization rate of the revenue would be. But the other part is that it is the port and the marina by which Melrose is developed. And without it, it can't be developed. So as a result, we've asked you simply to postpone this. Let us continue the dialogue. We've had an excellent relationship with county administrator, the assistant administrator, and the county attorney, and I think we can work these problems out. If not, what the other gentleman said about a long and involved condemnation process is just not to everyone's advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Puebalas.
Good evening. I'm here about the 1% sales tax referendum you are proposing. As I understand, it will be the third reading tonight. And I know you're going to vote to pass it, but I'm going to tell you here and now, we are going to fight it. While county council voted for themselves a pay raise last year at the height of the pandemic, where businesses were locked down, people were out of work and inflation was hitting us hard. Gasoline prices are rising. You're adding a 1% sales tax on top of that as we are now currently in an official recession? Are you tone deaf? We can't afford that. As Councilwoman Alice Howard said in the last reading, you have the tools to curb growth. You've got the building codes, you've got the zoning codes, you've got regulations, stormwater regulations, environmental regulations, infrastructure regulations. Use those tools. We voted you in to curb growth and a lot of you ran on the promise of curbing growth and I don't see that happening. I see more growth now than I did 20 years ago when I moved here. I fled a high state sales tax and you raise the sales tax, you'll be only 1% lower than New York State. Shame on you. Don't pass this and if you do, the Beaufort Tea Party will start the fight and as chair, I will lead the charge again. Last time you had this referendum, we defeated you by over 70% of the voters. Watch us coming. We will defeat this again. Do your job, enforce the codes, curb the growth. You've got the power, you've got the tools. Use them. Thank you.
Carmen.
Thank you for having the meeting and for letting us talk. I sent in my notes this morning and so I won't elaborate except for one point. I just want to make it clear, I'm all for green space. Between my husband and I, we have 70 years of real environmental experience and we cleaned up sites not just for water, but for air, for land, for endangered species. And we did that in multiple sites, multiple locations, and multiple states. The concern I have here because, and I'm new to Beaufort County, but it concerns me when I see things like sediment barriers that are not working properly. And I see this all the time at any construction site. When I see that it takes so long for the ordinance that won the award to be put in practice, to not have an ordinance here that said if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet, you need a PE to sign off on it, and have taken years to get that in place, I'm very concerned about the environment here. I'm concerned about the vigor and the people that are trying to make decisions, all well-meaning. I'm sure they have good intentions, but do they really understand the depth and the breadth? And here's another example. Green space is wonderful, but if you don't control the runoff, if you don't control the runoff from all the development, it's really not going to do anything. And so the sales tax is a great idea. Again, I voice Ann's points about this is not exactly the greatest time to have an increase in the sales tax. But secondly, if you're going to go through this, which it sounds like you are, then please give us a methodology. It's not good enough to just say you're going to have all this money. I perfectly understand, Senator Davis, you can't give us a list of the properties, okay? But what is the methodology? Are you just going to get bits and pieces of properties all around the county? That's not going to be good for the environment. And who are the people who are going to be making the decisions? Okay? I'd like to see some true environmental engineering credentials, not a marathon jogger, not a well-meaning mom who's decided to move here. Okay? Real environmental engineering credentials. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. That ends the first session of citizen comments. Those on the second list, you will have your time when we actually go through the public hearings for those items. Okay. We will move on to liaison and committee reports. And Ms. Howard, I think you want to go first.
Yes, thank you. I attended the 2nd of August JCL meeting. They are going to have a 7% tuition increase in their 2022-23 budget, although there will still be a lot of pre-tuition for eligible students, which is a great number of them. They're still seeing an increase in the dual enrollment in the high schools. And the other thing that they talked about was they have a fund balance of 120 calendar days, which is a decent-sized reserve. The enrollment is a little bit down 5% as of the 2nd of August. And Colleton County and Beaufort are both seeing the dual enrollment increase. Capital Projects, they are about to put in another CDL pad up in Hampton and they're renovating two rooms to increase their HVAC program and there's some roof replacements going on. And Beaufort Memorial Hospital met in July and I think, All Somerville went to their finance meeting. I went to their regular meeting. The satellite site for USCB at Beaufort Memorial Hospital, that renovation is going very well and they'll be doing clinical instructions at Beaufort Memorial Hospital in conjunction with USCB, which was also funded with some county ARPA money. That's all I had to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other report to come before council? Okay. Seeing none, we will now move to the public hearings and action items. Item number nine is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance for a 2022 county green space sales tax referendum. May I have a motion for that item, please?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll sit back and listen, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Now, I'm going to ask for the public to weigh in on this item. Please note that we have heard several things going forward about this. There will be an amendment to this after the public hearing. We are going to change the amount of money that we expect to raise during the time period because we are going to shorten the number of years. So that is going to be coming up as that. So we'll begin this. I'm going to ask for Jesse White to come forward, please.
Good evening, Chairman Pastment and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to comment on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. We applaud Beaufort County's leadership in pursuing this new and innovative green space sales tax, which would allocate voter-approved funds for regional conservation. We hope you will agree to put the question to the voters by referendum this November. Beaufort has long been a leader of conservation in this state. Overwhelmingly, Beaufort County residents support land preservation. Our expansive and bountiful natural resources, along with the quality of life that they provide, are among the primary drivers bringing so many people to visit and reside here. Our rich ecology within the Port Royal Sound watershed is part of what makes Beaufort so special. But equally as important are the people of this community who time and again recognize the inherent value of our green spaces and who foster a shared sense of appreciation and stewardship for those resources for current and future generations. This ethos is reflected in the results of a recent poll that we partnered with the Conservation Voters and Trust for Public Land to conduct in connection with the potential green space penny. The poll was completed by McLaughlin and Associates and they surveyed 300 likely voters in Beaufort County and found the following. Broad public support with 64% supporting a green space penny for a term of two years, raising up to $100 million. Continued support at 64% when framed in terms of average annual financial impact on the average resident, which is estimated at $63 per year. Increased support at 71% when informed that green space funds could be used for regional conservation efforts protecting land that improves water quality, reduces congestion, and improves quality of life, even if located outside Beaufort County. And broad public concern about growth with 65% feeling we're growing too fast. In addition, the poll tested alternative scenarios for the referendum, including a half penny over two or four years and a full penny for four years, raising 200 million. The strongest support remained with a green space penny for two years, raising 100 million. Therefore, we recommend that council adjust the parameters of the green space penny to a two-year term, raising up to 100 million. The Beaufort-Jasper region is growing rapidly and we're fast approaching a tipping point. In order to retain what makes this place so special, we need to approach growth management in a more holistic manner. The green space penny program offers a tool to meet regional growth demands at their root by pursuing strategic land protection of properties that share regional significance and public values and benefits. Thank you for your consideration and your leadership.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment on item number nine, the public hearing regarding the green space sales tax?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. Some excellent points that were made earlier by two individuals opposed to this. The first seemed to be there needs to be processes put in place. We need to make sure that there's expertise. The Act itself requires that two weeks before a referendum, the county must publish in a newspaper of generous circulation the question that is to appear on the ballot with a description of the methods by which the county's governing body intends to procure open lands and green space for preservation. So your action here tonight is the first step in a process and then you're going to have to go ahead and come up with and articulate what that process is going to be. That'll be provided to the public prior to the vote. The second question or concern was raised, why doesn't this county do something in regard to its zoning or land use regulations? The problem is the horse is out of the barn. I mean, you've got densities that have been approved, they're in development agreements, they're in PUDs. In many instances, municipalities did that. Sometimes that's enticements to have people annex into their boundaries. I mean, we're dealing with the cards that have been dealt. And right now, if you did something in regard to a moratorium or tried to take away those vested rights, you're subjecting yourself to an inverse condemnation lawsuit. So you really don't have those as alternatives. And then lastly, Ann's right. I mean, this is a debate that needs to take place from the public sector. And I respect the Tea Party, I respect their arguments, I respect the fact that taxes during an inflationary period is an uphill battle. I'm willing to make that case. And at the end of the day, it'll be the people of Beaufort County that decide. But unlike the vote that she cited, the 70-30 defeating last time, that wasn't in regard to open space and green space. Those particular referendums have consistently been approved by Beaufort County voters in the 70s. And so I would just submit all that to you and recommend that you approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this. I will turn to Mr. Somerville. Mr. Somerville, you wish to make an amendment to the third reading?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I'd like to move that the duration of the referendum be lowered from four years to two years and that the amount to be collected be capped at 100 million. So my motion is two years, 100 million dollars.
Second up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded. Discussion, any discussion from the members of council? Ms. Howard.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the AG's opinion that we received. It was very good to get that. I also appreciate the Chamber of Commerce, Regional Chamber of Commerce, sent a letter to council members dated August 4th and they had some very thoughtful questions in that regarding this referendum. I still will vote against this because for several reasons, and I'm probably the lone vote in chambers or online that will be voting against it. As many of you know, I have always been for preservation of property and easements, both in the state of South Carolina and in the state of Georgia with my previous life when I was employed by the air station. And I've seen various methods on how to do that. I don't regard this as a good method necessarily to buy development rights from things that have already been approved by municipalities. For 20 years, Beaufort County Ruin Critical Lands Program has existed, 2002, and they've only spent $141 million. Now we're proposing to spend $100 million in two years. I know that we can put aside the money and not spend it that quickly, but the Ruin Critical Lands Program has been recognized nationally and how thoughtful and how that program works with landowners who want to preserve the natural environment of Beaufort County. The other issue I have with this referendum, and if it goes to the vote, to the voters' mind, and if it's passed, I will greatly support it at that time, but I cannot vote for it tonight. I think that we have preserved over 28,000 acres since the Ruin Critical Lands Program was established, but it's all been in Beaufort County. This referendum expands that to other, to a regional. So I have questions. Is county council, the future county council, going to approve for properties to be bought in Hampton, Colleton, Jasper County to prevent growth or to preserve property? I have an issue with that. There's also another issue that hasn't been addressed, which is condemnation. And from reading it and from understanding it, I think Beaufort County could actually use these funds for condemnation, which may be a far reach for the intent of this, but I think it could happen. So I will not be voting for this referendum. If the voters in November vote to pass it, so be it. And I will be fully behind it to support it, but I don't think this is the right referendum at the right time for our Beaufort County residents.
Any other member of council wish to make a comment? Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I'm glad to see that Paul has made the motion to lower to two years and in our last council meeting, I thought that was, our original ordinance was aggressive. I still think we're aggressive in what we're asking for in one cent. I think that we're more apt to be able to get something approved for half a cent. I am not making an amendment right now unless someone else wanted to also jump in there, but I will support the two years and one cent. However, again, I think we're being too aggressive and we leave ourselves to the vote of the public, which again, anytime something has come up in our chambers here, I've always been someone that has said, let's let the public decide. Let's put it in the public's hands, which again, that's what we do and I think that's better than the 11 of us making all the decisions is when we can have the public make their decision and tell us what they want.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief. So originally, we, a year ago, came out with LOST, which is the local option sales tax. I came out against that. I think four of us came out against that and it was defeated by 70%. There's a lot of big differences between that. One is LOST did not have an end date, did not have a revenue cap on it. The only way to get it removed was with signatures. The only way to get it removed was with signatures, hand signatures, and then it would have to come back to County Council to be voted on. So in reality, there's no way it was going to be removed. That's the biggest reason I oppose that, along with, I believe we are coming back with another referendum this summer because we've had discussions. We started off with transportation tax, or the transportation referendum, that was our discussion, and that was somewhere between six to 10 years and maybe 700 million dollars, which is a big pill to swallow in a time like this. A lot of us did run on slowing down growth in this area, and a lot of times, County Council in the past has voted a transportation referendum, has tried to put new ordinance in, and we're still in this situation. So we've been using those different tools, and we've been fighting against municipalities with them approving more rooftops. This is an opportunity for us to actually buy down those rooftops. Everyone's continuing to talk about purchasing land itself, but we can also buy building rights. For example, if a neighborhood and that land is owned for 500 homes, there are ways to negotiate to bring that down to 300 homes without us actually owning county property, but we're bringing down the rooftops in Beaufort County. We can build more roads, we can build more schools, but we're always going to be chasing the tail over and over and over until we can slow down the amount of rooftops in Beaufort County. I live in Bluffton. I live in District 7. It is the most booming area in Beaufort County right now, and it is absolutely nonstop. And I have these discussions constantly with Bluffton Town Council. So I'm in favor of the two years, 100 million. I think that it gives us the opportunity to show the public that we're going to use these funds, we're going to show you how we're going to use these funds, and if it is successful with the support of the community, if we decide to come back with something else in the future, I hope that we can intertwine that with this. It is a new tool in the toolbox, and everything else that we've had before this was also a new tool at one point, and we thought it was going to fix it, we thought it was going to work, and we're still here today. So I'm going to advocate for this. I do support it. I think it gives us a good headway, a good direction to see if this is the right way for Beaufort County to go. It does have a financial cap, and it does have an end date on it. And those are two things I think we need to have in any type of tax proposal we have. And the other big thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Senator Davis, but it does not include tax on food or medicine. That is correct.
The exemptions in regard to food and medicine and gasoline, those are not subject to the sales tax.
Awesome. So thank you very much. So based on that, that means a lot of things that are getting paid for is going to be paid for by tourists as well. A lot of people like to say 50%. I think it's more like 40% tourists will pay for, but I do think that's a big chunk that we can capitalize on. If this gets approved here tonight, and then it gets voted on in November, it wouldn't take action until, Mr. Chairman, you said around May of next year, which is right when tourist season is starting. So we're going to get two summers of tourist season if we can get this passed now, and it actually fades out before 2024 ends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover.
Yes. A lot of my, I guess, comment or question is going to be around Senator Davis. Senator Davis, Ms. Howard asked the question about condemnation, and I do have a problem with condemnation, and I do not really support condemnation, but as a last resort. So I don't think county government should go out and start condemning people's property because of whatever. So that question, it doesn't say so in the bill. Is condemnation an option for this council if this green space bill passes?
This is the first time that that question's been posed to me.
If you could get it and turn your general opinion on that, too, as well, I appreciate it. I mean, it's not in here, but she raised that, and that is a concern, and I think it should go on record now, whether, you know, in our discussion, whether that should be something to be considered.
I guess that's the most direct response I can give to that, Mr. Glover, is nothing happens in regard to that money without this council deciding through an ordinance what it wants to do. So if the sentiment on this body, and I would agree with it, is that you ought not go in and compel and condemn, but rather negotiate, that's something that you, as a county, can decide to do. You know, the act itself is silent in that regard, but if condemnation is seen as something that the county doesn't want to do, then County Council shouldn't propose it.
No, I agree with you, and I understand that. And as an elected body of 11 people that will change every two years, could change a council opinion on something like that, but that's, you know, you can't answer that, and I understand that. But that's a concern I think Ms. Howard raised, and I think also raised as well. My other question is really, if this referendum passes and council will determine the methodology of how funds are dispersed, et cetera, et cetera, there wouldn't be a problem of having a hybrid type of approach to the spending. And when I say a hybrid, we have in place a program with the Rural and Critical Lands Program. Some of these funds could be allocated to them for their program as well.
Well, I think in terms of, I think in spirit, what you're saying is correct. I mean, it wouldn't be allocated to them, and then they decide how to spend that money. But you could integrate them into the selection process, you could integrate how they go about evaluating land. And in fact, this law was drafted with that in mind, because I was familiar with the Rural and Critical Lands Program and how successful it's been down here. And so when I drafted this legislation, it was to give the county enough latitude so we could adopt what processes it thought was best. And I had in my mind, quite frankly, the Rural and Critical Lands Program. And really, I don't know how you guys are ultimately going to come down on this, but I would imagine that that human and infrastructure is going to be incorporated into your selection process, I would imagine.
That's my question.
Of course, that's up to y'all.
Yeah, right, right. I appreciate that. You've answered my concerns. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Mr. Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of the proposal as it's being discussed, and here's what I think will hold out as soon as we pass this, is we could have this in place for two years, and we've been talking about. It would be coming off about the time we would probably be looking at putting in place the transportation penny. So when it would be coming off, when it's coming on? We all know that we need to do the transportation one, and I think we'll end up using the time wisely to tee up some of the transportation projects so that it'll make it easier to do that when the time comes. So I am in favor of the as proposed.
Any other comments? So the summarization is, on the table is a two-year maximum timeframe with $100 million. That was not just pulled out of thin air. If it's successful in November, we don't start collecting the money till May of the following year. That leaves seven months and then whatever part of the next 12 months, and we suspect by the way we collect money, that's how we arrived at the $100 million. It is titled "Green Space Sales Tax Penny," that we're going to use that money to preserve land from future growth. This is Beaufort County. I know the law says we are entitled to spend that money in Jasper, Colleton, Hampton County. We have a lot of land to preserve in Beaufort County. Therefore, I'm not sure that this council, or a future council, would want to spend money in another county when we need to spend it in our own county. Next, there are a lot of tools in the toolbox that were listed there. We don't have to use them all. Condemnation means you're condemning a piece of property because you want to use it for a public purpose. I don't think this act reflects that. I am going to support this. I hope the rest of council will support this. I'm going to call the question now. Do I need a roll call for this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Would you call the roll, beginning with the people who made the motion and second, which is Mr. Somerville and then Mr. Cunningham?
Motion to amend.
It is the...
Okay. I have... Yes. I'm loading that. Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham? Councilmember Flueeling?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson is not... Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover? Chairman Passamit?
I get it as nine yes.
Nine one.
One no.
The motion passes.
Motion passes, okay. So it's been amended, now we have to take action to approve it. Are there any further discussions regarding this? If not, would you call the roll?
Chairman, I'm stating what the percentage is, what the rate is, what the amount of time.
Okay, it is a one-cent sales tax for a two-year duration, allows the county to collect up to $100 million.
Whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first. Mr. Cunningham made the motion, and Mr. McKellen made the second.
I have it. Vote on the main motion. Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Flueeling?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes, nine one.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of the real property with TMS numbers located on Helmsman Way, Hilton Head Island. May I have such a motion?
Take that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. May I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. We will now turn to the public. There are members of the public who wish to comment on this particular item. Sally Robinson, you will be first.
Good evening, council, and thank you for having me. I am a sixth-generation-born native on DeFuski Island, and I'm here on behalf of changes that's coming to DeFuski, changes that I'm trying to myself be a part of, basically, because we have guller homes there falling apart, we have graveyard being overgrown. So I have a nonprofit tour business to help raise fund beside looking for funding through other companies. Right now, I am speaking on behalf of hearing that I'm going to have to pay to make, whilst I'm trying to make money for the business, the community, the guller community, and on behalf of many folks who are not on the island. We have houses falling apart, like I say, graveyard growing up. And I'm trying to make funding, but then I'm hearing that I'm also going to have to pay in order to run this business, and I'm trying to understand how do you take from a giving company, something that's trying to give back? I used to see my mom, my grandmama, many folks on that island run back and forth to the council for things that they felt we needed on the island. For me, as sixth generation, coming back home and seeing our community, these houses and falling apart and graveyard overgrowing, I just cannot stand to see this happen, knowing that I have to try to do the best I can. And doing so, that's why I started this tour business. But now, I'm also finding that I may have to be sharing a piece of that pie, which I'm getting very little. I'm at just, I mean, four just now, and it just hurts me to try to understand all the new growth and stuff coming. I am also trying to help our community be better, but these homes and these graveyard that's falling apart and overgrowth somehow is hurtful to me, because my ancestors, those people that I grew up with, taught me, raised me to be a better person, to be a good person, to give back, to share, to care. And I'm just trying to clearly understand that if I have to share what I'm trying to give back to, how does that work? I've seen graveyard, we have had two graveyards over there built on, one a guller graveyard, one a Native American graveyard. It hurts me to see these things happen. So I'm just back, I'm just back home, trying to support and give back to the community, not take away. And with that, I need the helping hand of others to help support and give also, so that we can all live in this community and share and care for one another. And that's my speech. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Melrose Marina is certainly a very hot topic at the moment. It's a catch-22 situation for my wife and I, because we live on Melrose, we own a house in Melrose. So we would love to see Melrose Inn start up again, it would help our island, it would help Melrose, it would help the properties increase on Melrose. However, it's very alarming to see some of the proposed business structure that Whitestone has proposed to us vendors at Melrose Marina. Prior to June 27th, which is when the first reading was done, it was my understanding that all vendors were told to prepare for profit sharing. It would be somewhere between 20 and 30%. The number was never exactly said, but it was going to be in that area. And what I understood is everyone had to be prepared for that, whether they had to increase their prices or whatever, but to be ready for it. After the first reading on June 27th, this did change. They came and offered us fixed rates, but doing so only offered us month-to-month leases, which means that could obviously be changed at any given time, and that business structure could go back to profit sharing at any time. It's very alarming to me and to all the other vendors at the marina. The big picture here is if we, our vendors, have to pay such a high percentage, we're then going to have to increase our prices, which then, at the end of the day, the big picture is there's going to be less tourists to come to our island because it's going to be too expensive. Like Leanne had mentioned earlier, it's already very expensive, and if we have to reflect this profit sharing, it's going to be much higher than it already is now. I love DeFuski Island, I want DeFuski to do well, but I just need, I'd like to have more assurance that this profit sharing is not going to come down the road and be introduced to us again. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Grant McClure. I'm with the council.
Oh, Grant, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Was a "why" there?
I've been called worse things, so I'll take Gary.
So have I.
Yep. Yeah, I just have a quick question with regards to the two pieces of property that were being purchased, or are going to be purchased at Helmsman Way. And I was just curious if the town of Hilton Head had been looped in on those plans.
Answer to that is yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item on the agenda for Helmsman Way? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and second on the floor, discussion by council members. Any discussion by any council member going forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hervishon, go ahead.
I have voted against this, I will continue to vote against this. I think this particular project, on this particular piece of property, is going to be wildly expensive. I am curious as to why we haven't looked a little bit more seriously at other locations, namely the property next door to this one, and then also a little bit more seriously about Pinky. We've debated that for years, and no need to get back into that. But generally, I am against condemnation. I don't like it, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think it sends the right message to the private sector, and I think that this property is going to be wildly expensive. So for those reasons, I am not going to support this.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Lawson?
Yes, and I will continue to support this. I think that we need to secure and determine our own fate when it comes to having a ferry location on the mainland and have a ferry location on DeFuski. We have battled this for years, and councils before us have battled this. But I think that this is the one step. We could go on and on and on and continue to kick the can down the road and look for more locations. This location has come up from staff as being the location that meets and checks many of the boxes that we need. Maybe not all the boxes, but enough that this is the place we need to go. We need to have that location to have a permanent ferry, which I've said this all along, is once we have a permanent location on both sides, I think we'd see our ferry costs go down. We can even get out of the ferry business, we can just have the locations that people can come and go to. That would be the ideal situation, that the ferry then eventually becomes self-sufficient. But again, this is the first step in a long marathon. And again, I'm supporting this to move forward, to have those necessary and needed permanent locations.
Any other comments? Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Best location? Secondly, we have an obligation to fix it for the residents on DeFuski. And thirdly, I think it opens up a reasonable probability it will probably occur, which is it will end up with some kind of a ferry system, rail transportation with Georgia through Savannah, which would have a significant impact for us, which we couldn't do if we don't have the location on the island. So I'm strongly in favor of this.
Any other comments?
Just briefly say that I do oppose this, but I will say the majority of my comments from Melrose because I do think they go hand in hand. And with that being said, the people that are for one but not for the other, it's still the same situation. One person is a property owner, the other person is a property owner. It's always fun to read a room, and you see a lot of people in support of the condemnation of this property, but are going to come out against the condemnation of another property for the exact same purpose.
Any final comments? We will call the roll. Mr. Lawson was first, McKellen was second.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Fluehling?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes eight-two.
Item number 11, a second reading of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of real property with numbers collectively commonly known as Melrose Landing. May I have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. Mr. Pitcher, I understand you wanted to make a comment regarding this? No, okay. Discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Lawson?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment that we increase the funding from $800,000 to $900,000 for this reading of the ordinance, for the second reading.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Duly motioned and seconded, we will have a discussion of the move to make it from $800,000 to $900,000. Any comments? Seeing no comments, do I need to call the roll?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham, McAllen, sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Fluehling?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-two.
Okay, it's been amended to that. Any further discussion about this item before we take a roll call vote again? Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said just a few moments ago, I'm opposed to the condemnation. I do find it kind of interesting, though, that we really are stuck between a rock and a hard place. We have some people that come up today and say they're worried about their fees going up by their vendors, but that's not us, that's the new property owner that controls that. We also have people say that the ferry is expensive, but now we're being charged $10,000 a month to run that ferry out of there, which is $120,000 a year, which the county is going to have to pick up that bill as well. I understand negotiations, I understand different opportunities. It's tough. With that said, I don't believe that this is the only option we have. I do think there's other options. This project, just on this side alone, will, I believe, will be over $3 million. Just to get the property alone and get it up to date is going to at least be around 2.7. And that's not anything else that we have to update. This is a lengthy process, it can get very, very messy. And I don't think you can support one without the other. It's hard to support condemnation of the one on the island, but not the one on Melrose. And some people say this could be what ends a deal of Melrose being purchased. I do know that that, I believe that that was, the closing on that was pushed back before we ever showed interest on it, once or twice before. So I'm not sure how much actually goes into that, that that's the county's fault, that's between those other two private parties, which they are entitled to do, just like we're entitled to negotiate with the taxpayers' dollars. I don't think condemnation is the right way to go about that, I think there's other options. I will not support this, just like I will not support the other one. I understand we have an obligation to DeFuski, but we also have to make the best decision for DeFuski and all of our taxpayers. We're looking at about an eight to $10 million project to get this done, no matter how we go about it. So eight to $10 million, plus being tied up in court for a while and two different pieces of property, does not sound like a win-win for Beaufort County. And Mr. Lawson said earlier that we do what's best for the masses and not the few before we open up this meeting. And I want to make sure that DeFuski is taken care of, the vendors, the tourism. I want to see Melrose get redone. But we have to protect everybody's interests when push comes to shove. And I do not want to be in the ferry business.
Mr. Fluehling?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a great deal of respect for Robert Fox, and in an effort to further his goal, I'm going to make a motion that we delay third and final reading for one month. And that you form a committee, sir, to evaluate all the different options that we have in greater detail and meet with the developer and his attorney to make sure that we are crossing every key and dotting every i before we vote to condemn this property. Because I would rather have an amicable settlement with a business partner as opposed to a defendant lost by the county. So my motion is to delay for a month to proceed with negotiations incident to purchasing this property.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Fluehling made the motion and Mr. Cunningham made the second. My question is this, this is the second reading. Therefore, I think this is premature because we have not even put the third reading, which won't be until next month. And then if you wish to delay it because we're in negotiations, that would be the appropriate time.
Well, I think that hearing the motion, voting in favor of the motion today, puts us in a favorable light with any potential purchaser of Melrose. And it makes it seem, makes it, our willingness to discuss this very apparent to the public and everybody else involved. And it will lay a lot of public fear. I think this is the appropriate time to delay second reading.
Oh, now you're changing it.
This is, we are at second reading, we're delaying second reading.
No, I thought you said delay third reading. Yeah, that's what, that was the motion that you made, was to delay?
Delay this motion for 30 days, delay this?
So you want to delay the second reading, which we are in, for another 30 days?
Exactly.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to withdraw the existing motion and second. You withdraw the motion, do you withdraw the second?
I do.
Okay, all right, now?
To delay second reading for until the meeting in the middle of September.
I believe it's September 12th.
September 12th.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion and second on the floor to delay the second reading to September 12th. Any discussion about that? Mr. Rodman?
Brian, you beat me to it, but I think it's a good motion to be in. And here's why, I kind of think we are. I don't see any downside to it, and I do see quite a bit of upside to it as it's proposed. And second would be the time to do it, because if we had a significant change at third, we'd have to come back to second anyway. But my understanding of where we are is between the parties that there's general agreement that the county would acquire the property. But what's being negotiated is the access by Melrose and the purchase price. So I think taking a couple extra weeks will not harm anything, and it has the possibility of getting us more on the same page in a long-term partnership. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Mr. Fluehling, your hand is still up, is, you want to make another comment? Oh, no you don't, okay. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, so you're asking for a 30-day extension, does that put us before or after our next council meeting? So would it be in 30 days?
No, he's asking for, the amendment is to delay until September 12th so that the second reading would be on September the 12th.
Okay.
Followed by a third reading, which would be either
Two weeks later.
Later on in September or early October.
So the motion is to delay until the next council meeting and not a 30-day, okay. I thought I heard a 30-day delay.
So I just want to make sure council is clear that all we're doing is giving second reading to a motion to appropriate the funds.
Right.
Again, we have plenty of time between second and third reading to continue with negotiations. You all have already voted to authorize the county administrator to proceed with condemnation whenever that point arrives, if it does arrive. So all we're doing tonight is appropriating the money to do what needs to be done. I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record and clear for council.
Everybody understands that.
But I can also clear that part of that motion was that you form a committee to meet and negotiate with the owner in this council.
Okay, I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, that's part of the motion.
Yeah, what's part of the motion?
That was the original motion.
Oh, that was part of the original motion, okay, but we withdrew that, okay. All right. So if I understand where we are, we would delay the second reading until September 12th. Therefore, the First Amendment that passed to raise it to $900,000 is negated because we are delaying this second reading, which would not have passed. Therefore, we're back to the $800,000 that we originally had. Is that not correct?
You have already approved the amendment. If you don't vote on the main motion as amended, then the $900,000 carries forward to the next agenda.
But delaying this second reading negates what we approved as the amendment. Because we have to go back to the original item.
That's complicated.
Right, because we have an amendment that says we want to delay the second reading. We have already approved an amendment that says we want to raise the price to $900,000.
And that passed.
That passed, but this one is now going to say, we're not taking a vote on the second reading.
But it probably carries the $900,000. Thank you, it does.
The motion's been amended to $900,000, whenever you all vote on it.
That's correct.
Whether it's in this meeting or in a future meeting.
But we did not take a vote on the item.
On the floor right now, carries forward, Joe. We're just delaying the motion on the floor, we're not delaying, we're not delaying the motion that was proposed, or the one that came from the previous meeting. This is the one that moves forward, is the one that we just approved.
That's okay.
To amend it. And again, I'm going to stress to you, Joe, that I, and I need your word on this, that you will appoint a committee. If it's not part of the motion, I'll change the motion again.
No, that's fine.
You know, we can have a committee to meet with the developer and his attorney.
We certainly want to be amicable in this, I just want to do it the right way. Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I agree with you that the $800,000 carries forward because we haven't voted on the main motion. But my concern is this quote-unquote committee that we're going to replace our professional negotiators with somebody else who may or may not know what's going on. I'm not comfortable with it forming a committee at all, I'm going to vote against it on that basis alone. We have people that are deeply involved in these negotiations and understand the issues and have done an excellent job, will continue to do an excellent job. And I think throwing people in there at the last minute is a mistake, I will vote against it.
Mr. Greenway?
I would just point out to you all regarding the committee that, you know, you all have history of putting together committees to negotiate things like development agreements and things like that. I would venture to guess that the reason the individual who suggested that, and I have a lot of respect for him, and he and I have worked on a couple of situations that we have resolved successfully, is so that he can turn this into a political issue with having members of county council serve on the negotiating committee. I certainly hope that is not his intent, but I too would strongly recommend against a council committee to carry out these negotiations. That never works out well for the citizens of the county whenever council gets involved in negotiating these agreements.
Any other final comments before we take action? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to vote against it, now after I understand the, again, I have no problem. We've been trying to negotiate with them, under my understanding, with our staff. At this point, this is for funding, we can continue to negotiate. And if we need to make a substantial change at the next meeting, where that doesn't put us any different place than we are right now, I'm asking for, to delay. So I'm going to vote against it to go back to the original ordinance.
Mr. Hervishon?
Thank you. I think point well taken about council not having the best track record negotiating agreements, that's a really good point. That said, Mr. Robinson said something interesting, which was upside, no downside with the delay, and I think it sends a good message. So I'm curious as to whether or not the maker of the motion would amend his motion so as to remove the committee but keep the delay. I would support that as well, Mr. Fluehling, that is actually the same point I was going to make. I think Brittany's done a good job so far in negotiations, and I'd like to see her see it through.
Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and withdraw that portion of it. But I think, you know, we all in executive session had some valuable questions and some, there's some information we need that we aren't getting at this point. And I thought that perhaps a sit-down face-to-face with a couple members of county council and and Brittany, and the administrator in attendance would provide the answers that we need and have a better basis for discussion of the reasons for the various issues that we've had. So, but I'm willing to withdraw, and I'm sure that Ms. Ward is fully capable of representing this county. She's done it admirably, time and time again, and I'm willing to do that. And I'm sure that if we have specific questions that need answers, she will provide them. She will get that information for us. So I'll withdraw that section of the motion, sir.
Okay.
And I will second it.
All right. So we're back to the just delaying this till September 12th. Okay? Okay, so before we take the formal vote, I still maintain, when, under Robert's Rules of Order, when you have a main motion on the floor, which we did, and you amend it, okay, you have to go back to the main motion as amended. So you take a vote for the amendment, and then you go back to the main motion. We now have an amendment that says delay the second reading. So if we go back to the main motion, okay, that says the $900,000 is part of the main motion.
Mr. Chairman.
We're just delaying everything till September 12th. So everybody understands that.
Yeah, just if I could have a reference to that before the next meeting, and if necessary, we'll change it at the next meeting, but that would set us back to second reading, sir. I think so. If you would please clarify and give us a, give me a citation, I'd be happy to look it up, but I'm fairly certain that we're correct. The motion as amended is what I am asking to be delayed.
Correct.
Not the motion that was presented, but the motion as amended.
Right.
Which was presented to us at the next council meeting.
I understand that. Okay?
If you disagree with that, I'd like a citation.
No, no, I don't disagree with that, Brian. I'm saying that the way you are asking now is the amendment for the $900,000 is being amended again to say we want to delay the second hearing, okay? Which we are in right now. Therefore, if that passes as amended, it is my opinion that we have literally superseded the $900,000, because the second hearing is not approved.
A point of order then, Mr. Chairman. Did we, or did we not vote on the $900,000?
We did, and that passed.
We did, and that passed.
But we, but, but we did not vote on the $900,000 in the original motion as amended. You then came up with a second amendment that said we want to delay the second hearing for a month, which means to me, and council can overrule me, but it means to me that once we take a vote and have this pass, I'm going to call for the motion as amended to delay the second hearing as if the $900,000 doesn't exist.
I'm completely lost, Mr. Chairman, and I need somebody else to explain, because I really don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, Mr. Somerville?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're absolutely correct, in my humble opinion, because the amendment to change it to $900,000 was part of, became part of the main motion, which is now being extended or postponed until September.
Yes.
The $900,000 never was passed, and we're still at $800,000.
That motion to amend was passed.
It was, yeah. Yeah. That motion was passed, and I absolutely agree with you.
Not the main motion.
But the main motion, we're delaying the vote of the main motion, which is $900,000.
I think it's, I think it's irrelevant. If you all vote to amend, to extend and defer action on the vote, we will have a sound legal action for you all to take up. It's either amended to $900,000 or it's not by the deferral, at which time we can then, at the next meeting, make a motion to amend back to $900,000 and take the appropriate course of action, once we have a chance to evaluate Robert's rules.
Right.
So I would proceed on with the vote on the deferral.
Yep.
Not to belabor it too much, but I do believe the 900 is approved, but an alternative would be for the maker, Brian, to actually go back and include going from the 800 to 900 in his motion, and then we could pass it, and then it becomes an on-vent.
No, it can't.
What?
It's been done already.
It's been done already.
Not according to Joe, if we don't pass it.
No, no, no. I acknowledge that it was done. We're undoing it, because we said just delay the action for the second hearing.
Okay. I'm just saying, it passed eight to two. I think we'll get it passed again if we have to, but I voted against it, but I'm just saying, I don't see any stop to the next reading.
I certify the registered parliamentarian to tell his answer.
Right. Okay. All right, let's take a vote on this. Mr. Fluehelling, you made the motion, and Mr. Cunningham made the second to delay the second hearing until September 12th. Would you call the roll?
Councilmember Fluehelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishan?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
No.
Chairman Passamit?
I have to say no.
The motion fails. Motion to postpone fails.
So now we're at the main motion as amended for $900,000. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
I.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Hervishan?
It's okay. I don't let my name have time either. I am going to vote against this. I don't think this is necessarily a motion for $900,000. It's more than that. And again, I'm against condemnation. I don't think it sends the right message to the public. And in this particular case, where we've got an asset on DeFuski with the Melrose Resort that is in very desperate need of getting redeveloped, I think that we're putting that in jeopardy. I don't think that's a good thing. I think that would be an asset to the county, and anything that we do to jeopardize that is terrible. So I am very adamantly against this, and for those reasons, and for also the reasons I stated on the other side of this equation, which is the Hilton Head location. I've always supported permanent locations for the ferry. I still support permanent locations for the ferry. I just think that we need to do it in the right way, and this is not it.
Any other comments? Mr. Lawson?
As we move forward, we're approving the money, and I would hope that we can actually sit down, or our representatives can sit down, and we can come to an agreement. We've got those 30 days. Right now, we're talking about it until September 12th to find out how far we can get. If we can't, I think we do need to move forward, so I'm going to vote for it.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fluehelling?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishan?
No.
Councilmember Glover? Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes seven three.
Okay. We are at, before we go to the citizen comments, it's very apropos to say to everyone involved in this, the famous Yogi Bear line of it ain't over till it's over. We have 30 days, and hopefully we'll come back at the third reading with some definitive way that we need to go. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment?
Yes.
Please come forward, state your name.
I, Chairman and members of the, members of the council, I come at you tonight to speak to you about the article I saw in the paper, "Beaufort Consider Using Funding to Build Splash Pad." You know, it's, it's been good, you know, and actually, this is also a part of the American CARES Act funding that we talked about, one of the last times I was up here. You know, this is another waste we've already had in our water park. You know, and the same place they want to put the water park, the same place it was at, we put it there before, what happened to it? Didn't last? And who, and putting that water, putting that water park splash pad there, who does that really benefit? And how long does that benefit? Weighing the balance. You know, in terms of, you're talking about something, in the water park, you're going to use that in the summer months, versus we have buildings throughout this county that we're not utilizing, that are, that the county council could be investing money in to help educate kids and helping some of these community centers that we could use year-round. And we're using the American CARES Act funding for that. And then we're asking, we're asking the public to do surveys. When they came, when they came, when they came out a couple months ago, they asked public to do surveys too, about the, about the, the public facilities, and now I see the tennis courts are coming up. The tennis courts up. I saw a different culture of people who was pushing that, and I saw that happen overnight. That happened overnight. We want tennis. We want to play, we want to play whatever, whatever ball, closer racquetball. We want to, we want to play that. But then, but then we have a different demographic, and I'm going to go ahead and address that in the room. We're dealing with crime rate, and we have minorities and other people out here who are asking for centers for their kids to just play sports or do something to get them out the house, so that they can be more productive. And we want to put up a splash pad? Are we really using, utilizing the taxpayers' money correctly? You know, this is a real serious problem within the community. Everyone is asking, well, why splash pad? And the sad thing is that we already, already had a waterslide. And you want to go back and put it, and put it in just to say, oh, well, we did something over there. The community has already spoken, and they've said what they want. You have data, you have data. Look into that data, unless you use the American CARES Act funding correctly. Unless, listen, let's not ask the community, let's not dazzle them with our bricks and bathroom with the BS, and let's not just hear them and be receptive to what they're saying, and actually putting a plan in place to care to the citizens. A splash pad, that's for tourism. That's not for the local people who live here 12 months out of the year.
Thank you.
You didn't thank you when Mr. Senator Davis was up here talking. When it's time around, you allow him to continue to talk. Just give me the same respect that you get, that you give over elected officials. Point blank people, if you like my message or not. I'm saying you may have liked this, but you don't like mine's. But mine's is very transparent. We serve the community, we serve people, not our personal agendas and groups. That has got to stop.
Any other comments? Any other actions to come before council? I declare the meeting adjourned.